Good evening and welcome to the Glendale City Council Meeting for September 28, 2021, being called to order at 6:04. To help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, City Council, as well as Board and Commission meetings, will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged, though, to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable—I don't know why I have a problem saying that word, but I do—viewable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's webpage. You can get those on glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/Glendale, and also on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices, using a free app called Screenweed and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during this meeting, please call 818-937-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
President.
Brotman?
Here.
Kusakian?
Najarian?
Here.
And Mayor Devine?
Here. What's next, please?
Mayor Devine, next would be flag salute.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian, would you please lead the flag salute for us?
Thank you. Will you all please rise and place your hand over your heart? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Let us pray. Tonight, we gather in these chambers to conduct the city's business and deliberate on issues affecting our residents. Help us have productive discussions that will broaden our perspective. Help us to take the various ideas presented and think of ways to flesh them out. If we do disagree, let it be on the content and not personality conflicts. Help us to resolve any disputes gracefully. Be creative, problem solver, and have a great team spirit. Help us to find principles that we all can agree on and put these into action. Finally, we ask that you watch over and protect the first responders who keep our neighborhoods, businesses, and cities safe. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item?
The agenda for the September 28, 2021 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on September 21, 2021.
Thank you. Next.
Presentations and appointments, 3A, Agenda Preview for the meeting of Tuesday, October 5, 2021.
Good evening, Mayor Devine and City Council members. Next week's meeting will begin in the afternoon with our Housing Authority meeting, with no specific items on the agenda aside from oral communications. Also, in the afternoon, we'll have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council with one item on the agenda, and that'll be a report by Community Development regarding the initiation of code amendments to Chapter 30.36 related to density bonus incentives. That evening for City Council, we have four items under consent. At 4A is Public Works regarding amendment and restatement of the Parking and Operation Agreement with the City of Glendale and CETTG Glendale. At 4B, Library, Arts, and Culture regarding acceptance of funding from the Association of Science Technology Centers Subgrant Program, Communities for Immunity. Following that, at 4C is Public Works regarding Fremont Park Renovation Project Construction Management Services. And finally, 4D is Glendale Water and Power regarding amendment of contract with StanTech Consulting Services to increase the contract amount by $75,000 to provide additional professional services needed to complete the Shoal Biogas Renewable Generation Project SEQA process. Under Action Items, we'll have a report by the city attorney regarding campaign finance, updates and cleanups to campaign finance ordinance, including conflict of interest provisions pertaining to land use appellate and proposed matching funds program. Following, at 8B, from Management Services regarding compensation of board, commission, and committee members. And at 8C, from Community Development regarding consideration of a moratorium on hotel development in downtown. And that concludes next week's preview.
Thank you, Mr. Boudin. Next item?
Next item is 3B, Domestic Violence Awareness Month Proclamation.
Thank you. And I understand we have virtually Tara Peterson from the YWCA and Arminie Perian from the Commission on the Status of Women to Accept. So I'm going to read it, and then I will give you an opportunity to speak and address on this most important issue. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects over 12 million Americans of all races, ages, gender, and income levels each year, and whereas one in three women will experience domestic violence in her lifetime, and whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average, and boys who witness domestic violence are twice as likely to abuse their own partners and children when they become adults. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police, and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, and inflicts untold emotional trauma on the entire family, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support to the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now, therefore I, Paula Devine, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim the month of October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge citizens of Glendale to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. And that's it for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Tara, would you like to go first?
Awesome. Thank you so much, Mayor Devine. I know this is an issue that you have been working on for many, many, many years in the City of Glendale, and I'm so honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the YWCA, Glendale, and Pasadena staff, board of directors, and volunteers. Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a time for us to come together to raise awareness about this devastating yet persuasive issue, to elevate the visibility of community resources available to help and to celebrate the strength and resiliency of the brave survivors in our lives and in our community. Over the last 18 months, COVID-19 has created a shadow pandemic of violence against women that has directly impacted our city. We witnessed a surge in the demand for our services and supported a record number of 200 and 100—2,000—over 2,000 survivors last year through a hotline, shelter, and wraparound services, counseling, case management, legal advocacy, housing navigation, and much more. We do not do this work alone. It is only with the support of our partnerships with law enforcement, our local government, partnering community organizations, hotel owners, service and faith-based groups, and our generous donors that we are able to meet the demands for our services. Together, we ensure that every survivor who reached out to us has had their needs for safe shelter, food, clothing, healing and healing services met, and that they were treated with dignity, care, and compassion. We thank you all for the role you played in making this happen and for the role you continue to play as we navigate the ongoing pandemic and its impact on our Glendale families. A special thank you to the Commission on the Status of Women for partnering with us for a third year to present the Purple Tie Awards to honor men in our community who are working to end domestic violence. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Tara. Arminie?
Thank you. Thank you, Tara. My name is Arminie Perian, Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women. I'm honored to accept this proclamation alongside the YWCA on behalf of the City of Glendale's Commission on the Status of Women. Glendale has great community involvement, and it's through the coordination of the City Council, Glendale Police Department, YWCA, and the Commission on the Status of Women, and other partners, that Glendale is able to serve its residents when they encounter domestic violence. In celebration of this community involvement, I would like to invite you, Mayor, and City Council members, along with the rest of the community, to the YWCA and Commission's Third Annual Purple Tie Awards on Thursday, October 7, at 6:00 p.m. on the front steps of the Glendale City Hall. The event honors men who are working to end domestic violence in our community. We will recognize Pastor Todd Leonard, Police Sergeant Aaron Ziegler, and Mahir Valbesarian for their work in supporting survivors and building a culture committed to ending domestic violence. The event will conclude with the lighting of the City Hall in purple in honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This event will be free and will follow public health guidance to ensure our communities' safe participation. Thank you, council, for this proclamation and for your continued commitment to ending domestic violence in our community.
Thank you, Arminie, very much. I'm happy, first of all, that you mentioned Glendale Police Department, because they've been a partner and collaborator in this effort for years and years when I first started in this advocacy. I look forward to the awards. I think you've chosen some upstanding young men to receive the Purple Tie Awards, and thank you for all you have done. And congratulations, Arminie, on being the Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women. Well done.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next item, please?
Next would be 3C, Fire Prevention Week Proclamation.
Okay. And this one goes to Battalion Chief Jeff Burgusa. Is he online?
He's present.
He's present. Okay. Well, congratulations, Battalion Chief. I'll say that before I read the proclamation. So this is for Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Glendale is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Glendale, whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed more than 2,770 people in the United States in 2020, according to National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 339,500 home fires. And the Glendale Fire Department responded on its own to 1,996, almost 2,000 home fires within the City of Glendale. And whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which Glendale residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety, and residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Whereas Glendale residents should be sure their smoke and CO alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities, and everyone in the home understands the sounds, the alerts of these alarms, and knows how to react. And whereas the Glendale Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, quote/unquote, "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety" effectively serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds and alerts of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Now, therefore I, Paula Devine, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim October 3 through the 9, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and urge all the people of Glendale to learn the sounds of fire safety for Fire Prevention Week. And to accept is Battalion Chief Jeff Burgusa.
Mayor Devine, honorable council members, Jeff Burgusa, your Fire Marshal, thank you for this proclamation. And yes, every year, this is a nationally-recognized observation, the longest recognition of such efforts in the United States. Nationally, all the fire departments come together with the National Fire Protection Agency and educate the public on a chosen discipline. This year, we are doing Learning the Sounds of Safety. We will be pushing out different educational outreach that week during social—through social media and other means. Really appreciate the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do.
Mayor, I have the proclamation here if you'd like me to hand it to them.
Would you please present? Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Excellent. Now, Councilmember Najarian's making it back to his seat. I also want to add that October is also Children's Environmental Health Month. Statewide, it has been established by our California State Assembly. It was established on September 1, and the aim is to raise awareness about the importance of clean air and water, safe food, and consumer products, healthy environments, and stable climates to children's health and development. In supporting this resolution, we are encouraging individuals and organizations to seek improved protections for all children and to perform acts of sustainability or environmental health wellness to ensure the health, the safety, and the wellness of our most precious resources, our children. So that October is Children's Environmental Health Month. Thank you. And what's next, please?
Madam Mayor, next is four consent items, including this. Following our routine, it may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. Madam Mayor, I do have two callers on the line for two separate items. One is 4A, and the other one is 4G.
Okay, so we'll pull 4A and 4G. And do I have a—
Madam Mayor?
—motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I also have a question on 4C.
4C.
4C, yes. I would like to ask the police chief about that.
I would like—
Okay, so we'll pull those three items. Do I have a motion?
Yes. I would like—I would like to move item 4B, 4D, 4E, and 4F.
Second.
Thank you. Second? Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Seconded by Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you. Thank you. And roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Okay, let's take 4A.
4A would be Glendale Water and Power regarding GWP's power source disclosure for calendar year 2020. One motion, note, and file.
Thank you. We have a caller on this one?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Shall we hear the caller first? They may have a question.
Yes. Kate Unger, you have three minutes. Kate, go ahead.
Hello, and thank you. Hello. Good evening, Mayor Devine, council members, members of city staff. Thank you very much. I did want to just talk briefly about the power content label. If you look at the top line, it looks like the eligible renewable Glendale's 39.9% California, 33.1%. It looks really good, but I wanted to drill down a little bit more and point out in particular that the next line, biomass and bio waste, Glendale is at over 20%, and California in general is at only 2.5%. So—and this isn't the Shoal landfill gas, which wasn't being burned in 2020. So it's some other biogas energy that Glendale has contracted for, I think. And I'm assuming that this is energy from combustion of gas produced by biomass and bio waste, which means that it does emit greenhouse gases and other pollutants. And then if you look a little further, I added up the energy from RPS-eligible clean energy, that's the other eligible renewable subcategories. Glendale is at 19.6%, and California overall is at 30.6%. And then if you add in other clean energy sources that are not RPS-eligible but are non-emitting, that's the large hydro and nuclear, Glendale's at 33.9%, and California is at 52.1%. So we are not doing better than California overall in clean energy. And if you permit me just another minute or so, Michael Hilfig recently had a column about renewable natural gas that had some points that I think are helpful here. He talked about, you know, renewable natural gas being methane gas that comes from ground-level methane-producing sources like landfill, wastewater, manure, and then it's cleaned up so that it can be injected into the pipelines. And he makes the point that renewable natural gas is a sham because it's not really renewable in the same sense as wind, solar, or hydroelectric, which produce energy without consuming their sources. But it will have at best a minuscule impact on global warming. In fact, it can be harmful. So I just wanted to point out that decisions on Glendale's power mix that are based on state RPS rules and legal definitions of what's considered renewable are problematic, and they don't help our attempts to be part of the climate solution. They incentivize the use of polluting energy. And by contrast, the state RPS doesn't value distributed energy like rooftop solar, which provides local clean energy for Glendale's grid without relying on transmission and without emissions. So given the pollution that comes with biomass and bio waste and the grid and climate benefits of local solar, I'd like to see less emphasis on the former and greater support for the latter. And I appreciate the power content label as an opportunity to point out these concerns, and thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate Unger. I asked a similar question at my briefing about the biomass and bio waste and the zero solar, and there seems to be a correlation there. Do you want to explain? Who's here from staff?
Madam Mayor, member of the City Council, to answer the caller's question or concern, we do have a long-term agreement, a contract in place for solar, and that facility is under construction, and soon solar will come from that facility and be delivered to the City of Glendale. But in the meantime, we required the project owner to deliver us renewables as classified by regulation. And so, based on market, that's what was available, and that's what was delivered. But by the end of this year, we should see a huge drop in our biomass percentage, closer to six and a half percent.
Say again, to how much?
Sit down—close to six and a half, estimated, from 20.
And the solar should go up to 13.7, correct?
Correct. Solar will go up as well. And then we do have another project that will deliver solar at the beginning of 2023 as well. So more solar in January 2022, and more January of 2023. So those numbers should be inverse. Sorry.
Do you think that we're incentivizing the non-renewables?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
I think that's what the caller said, that we're incentivizing—
You know, the—
Not using renewables?
No, the power content disclosure program is just based on the classifications on the different energy resources and how it's published to the public. And that's just what we're required to do for City Council before it's actually published to the City of Glendale. So we're not incentivizing any of—or less incentivizing renewables based on these percentages.
Okay, okay. Do any of the council members have a comment or a question?
Yeah, if I may, Madam Mayor.
Sure. Councilmember Brotman?
I think the issue is that the state recognizes biogas as a renewable resource and has for a long time. Most environmentalists will tell you that it's not a clean resource because it's dirty when it burns, and the fact that there's kind of a built-in incentive for biogas because it is considered a renewable product. So it encourages the production of biogas, which means feedlots and other types of—I don't know what the term is—but other types of sources that, you know, release methane and have other environmental consequences that are harmful. So it's a problem with the state law, but it's also a problem with us kind of just looking to meet our mandates without really looking deeper beyond our mandates to think about what's the best mix for Glendale, or what's the best mix that we can achieve from an environmental point of view, not just to meet regulatory requirements.
One more comment I did want to add, though, is that the GWP, we did not specifically contract out for biomass on this particular agreement. It's just what was available as replacement. So if you look at all of our contracts currently, there isn't strictly biomass included.
Right. This is all because Skylar didn't—doesn't have the solar facility up and running, right?
Correct. That is the contract I'm speaking of.
Okay. There are no other comments? Do I have a motion for this?
May I move the item?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Yes.
Kusakian?
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. And C, for C, please, read it to the record.
Item C would be Police Department regarding 2021-2022 grant from the State of California Office of Traffic Safety Selective Traffic Enforcement Program for distracted driving vehicle code bicycle pedestrian and driving under the influence violations. One motion to approve the Glendale Police Department's participation in the State of California's California Office of Traffic Safety Selective Traffic Enforcement Program and authorize the city manager to accept grant funds in the amount of $283,000 and execute the necessary agreements, certifications, and other documents required to accept the grant funds.
Thank you. And Councilmember Brodmann, this is one that you...
Yeah, I, right. I had a question for the chief. But first, I think maybe Chief Public, can you just say what this is and run through the operations that this grant allows?
Certainly, Mayor Devine, members of council, Councilmember Brodmann. We come before you generally once a year when we've applied for an Office of Traffic Safety grant to assist with our traffic enforcement. In this case, what we're recommending is that council accept $283,000 in funding, which allows us primarily to utilize officers on overtime to enhance traffic enforcement. The areas that we focus on are areas determined by the Office of Traffic Safety and the grant condition, which includes DUI slash driver's license checkpoints, DUI saturation patrols, enforcement operations focusing on the types of crimes, or sorry, the types of traffic violations that generally cause traffic accidents, which for us, a lot of times is focusing on unsafe speed, and also focusing on, we have four of them designated for bicycle and pedestrian operations and one for motorcycles.
Okay, thank you. And so my question was, are we able to shift the, we have four bicycle pedestrian operations, and I guess where I'm coming from is, you know, we all want more traffic enforcement. I think everybody in Glendale's been pretty clear that we want this. So, this grant is obviously a good thing, and we want that. But it would seem to me that what we really want to do is prioritize and reallocate to the extent we can to speeding and other primary collision factors. And the pedestrian plan, you know, identified very clearly why people are getting hit and killed, and it's not because of jaywalking or because of bikes, you know, running through stop signs. So, I was hoping to ask if we could take those resources, because these are all very precious, and if we could do instead the type of enforcement that I think people in Glendale really want, which is going after the speeding, the reckless driving, and the street racing, and DUIs and things like that.
Councilmember Brodmann, generally not, generally the state sends this to us, and once it's in this format, those resources are set, and they have a series of priorities, part of which you'll see is DUI enforcement, part of which is primary collision factor enforcement, but also based on Glendale's rankings in terms of pedestrian safety and pedestrians being hit, focusing on pedestrian and bicycle-related traffic collisions is also one of the state's priorities. So, just to further sort of flush that out, some of it focuses on activities by pedestrians and bicycles, but also those operations also focus on activities that might be conducted by drivers that also impact pedestrian safety or bicycle safety.
Okay. So, we don't have flexibility. This is given to us?
Once these are set, reallocating is extremely difficult, and generally, it's kind of like motorcycle enforcement would be one of the top of my list, but it is one of the state's priorities. And so, when they set the grants up, these resources are shifted into those categories and that come from the state.
Okay. So, anyway, to the extent possible, I would hope, you know, we can focus, you know, on the things that are getting people killed, and that is cars not looking to see a pedestrian and making that left turn and, you know, all those kinds of things.
And part of pedestrian enforcement is that, but as I said, we do have, there's also a balancing side of that because we do have some, in some places where pedestrians are injured because of actions that they have taken. So, we also look and focus on that. And we will try to do this through a data-driven approach, where we're looking at where do these collisions occur, what causes those collisions, and how can we, if you will, intervene with enforcement to try and correct those.
Right. And don't get me wrong, I know that there are plenty of crazy bicyclists and pedestrians out there that put themselves in harm's way. I just kind of think the priority is probably on the people that are out there potentially killing others, but we'll leave it there.
And if you look at the bulk of where the operations are, those are focused in primary collision DUIs, and the other ones are less, and that sort of matches out based on where our traffic collisions break out as well.
Okay, thank you.
You want to move the item?
I'll move the item, yeah.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please. We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brodmann?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. And item 4G, please.
Item 4G would be Public Works Regarding Consulting Services to Provide Public Outreach for Regulatory Compliance. One motion awarding a professional service agreement to S. Groner Associates to provide public outreach to support compliance with state recycling requirements for two years for $251,036, with the option to extend the agreement for two additional years for $171,848.
Okay, and this was pulled by a caller?
This was pulled by a caller, Jennifer Pinkerton.
Okay, all right. Jennifer?
Jennifer, you have three minutes. Go ahead. Ms. Pinkerton? Jennifer Pinkerton?
Maybe she just wanted a report.
Madam Mayor, do you want the report from the department head?
Yes, just go ahead and do the report, please, and we'll see if she comes back on. Is that Mr. Mroni?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of city council. This is a report in terms of the public outreach and education portion of the compliance requirements, regulatory compliance that we are doing as part of many different programs, including the SB 1383, which is the latest Cal recycle requirements. Per the direction of the council, we issued an RFP and received four proposals to centralize the process of the outreach and the education for our haulers, for our franchisees, and to make sure that the message is consistent and uniform that we provide to the residents. So, the goal is for this consultant to coordinate with the franchisees as well as also within our internal city staff to make sure that we put out a campaign that educates our residents in terms of all the new regulations and making sure that the city is in compliance with them. So, we received four proposals, and based on the overall qualifications, we selected or we recommended the selection of S. Groner. Their price also happened to be the lowest. So, based on those combinations, we're recommending the award of the contract to S. Groner and Associates. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is Ms. Pinkerton on the line?
Jennifer Pinkerton? You have three minutes. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you. My apologies, apparently the line dropped. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. First, I'd just like to say this contract is intended to assist the city with compliance with organic legislation primarily, and it looks to be a very well-qualified firm with significant municipal experience. On a general note, I want to stress that waste prevention or waste reduction really is critical in the arena of organics because California simply lacks the capacity to manage all of our organic waste. Generating less organic waste in the first place is really the only viable means of compliance with SB 1383. Next comment, I see that commercial waste reduction is called out. I would encourage the city to conduct before and after audits to measure how successful the outreach is. Was reduction in waste generation achieved and by how many commercial customers? And also consider how can we prevent backsliding? How can we ensure that commercial entities reduce their waste on an ongoing basis, that it's not a one-off or a short-term process that they engage in? That in turn leads me to a quick note that there are several very experienced nonprofits out there and software designed to assist restaurants and grocery stores with improving their food ordering processes so that they can reduce waste and cost. A glass inside a dumpster, you know, many of these businesses reveals that they really do need assistance. There is a lot of food waste still going on, and a lot of that can be addressed through improved ordering processes. I have a quick FYI. The City of Los Angeles had a two-year program that's called, excuse me, Curb Your Food Waste for Residents, and two important elements of that were smart shopping, buying so you will generate less food waste, and then the specific how to, yes, how to waste less food at home. So, I'm hoping that Glendale will consider incorporating the equivalent of that in this program. On a related note, I feel it's critically important to provide information about food dates. Too many people believe that used by, best by, sell by dates that are stamped on food are actually expiration dates, so they throw food away based on those dates. But those are not expiration dates. They only indicate peak freshness. Only infant formula has an actual expiration date. So, if outreach could include information about food dates, I think that would benefit all of us. I'm confident and hopeful that this contract will be the first step in laying the groundwork for going beyond just compliance with the mandate to permanently integrating waste prevention programs into the city in both the residential and the commercial sector. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pinkerton. I think she made some very good suggestions there. Curb your food waste, smart shopping, how to waste less food. So, I think, I hope we've taken notes and, I don't know, maybe this is something that should go to the Sustainability Committee as well, Commission as well, just to get their feedback. Do I have a motion for...
Yes, I would like to move item 4G.
Did you, where you meant? Okay, I'll second that.
Roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brodmann?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes, thank you. What's next, please?
Next would be five city council and staff comments.
Okay. Any council comments?
I do have a few items, if I may.
Okay. Councilmember Brodmann?
The first one was, I sent an email to Mike DeGhetto about our water conservation because I had read an article that said that despite the governor's calls for reduction in water use, in fact, water usage was up in LA. And I was very pleased when he told me that Glendale is actually making a lot of progress, and he referred me to a video from a, I guess, a news broadcast, and I thought it was really something that would be worth sharing with the public. So, I've given it to Arum. Can you play it? It's two or three minutes.
Now, 4:30. California's mission to conserve water has come up short in parts of the South End, but one city is bucking that trend. A new report shows people in Northern California and the Bay Area are cutting back the most.
But LA County actually increased its water usage. The City of Glendale didn't give its residents an option, though, imposing restrictions for nearly two months. KCAL News' Hermela Aragawi is there live with a look at how things are going. Hermela?
Hi, Juan and Suzie. We didn't see anyone watering their lawn today, and that's likely because the City of Glendale does not allow that kind of outdoor water use on Wednesdays, just every other day, starting Tuesday. And it is one of the many restrictions that seems to be making a difference.
While parts of the state are lagging behind in efforts to reduce water use during the drought, the City of Glendale has taken a proactive approach.
We try to conserve water as much as we can. Only water as much to keep the grass from dying.
Watering less and watering in the evenings, you know, when there's no sun, so it absorbs better. We've changed our sprinkler systems, timers, to come on three times a week rather than every day.
Last month, Glendale became one of the first cities in the state to implement a mandatory water conservation ordinance. It came a month after the governor's call to cut water use, and more than a week before, the Metropolitan Water District, which supplies water to some 19 million people across six Southern California counties, issued an emergency water supply alert.
Because we're a Metropolitan Water District member agency, 60% of the city's water comes from metropolitan, and a big part of their supply is from the state water project.
Glendale water officials have restricted outdoor water use to three days a week, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, and 10 minutes per area or zone.
We actually get hourly reads on everybody's water consumption. And yeah, for the most part, folks have switched to those days, the Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, and have cut back on the watering times.
And the numbers appear to show progress. While the new rules haven't been in place long enough to get complete data, according to Glendale Water and Power, the city is using 4% less water than this time last year and 17% less than during the 2015 water shortage. The city also tells us they have rebates as incentives for those who switch to turf or update old or faulty appliances. For those who don't comply, they tell us they first send warning letters, but can find people up to $1,000. Live in Glendale, Hermela Aragawi, KCAL 9 News.
Okay, well, I thought that was great, and I want to thank GWP. Mark Young is back there, and Mike DeGhetto on the water side. It's great. The next thing was, I attended the Cars for Cops and Kids event this weekend at Verdugo Park, and Councilmember Najarian was also there, and Mayor Devine was also there. And just wanted to say it was a great event run by the Rotary Club, but with a number of generous sponsors, and I was told they raised over $700,000 for at-risk youth and also specifically for youth mental health. So, I wanted to give a shout out to the Rotary Club and to the Glendale Police Department who were there in support. Glendale Fire Department was there in support. I'm sure Community Service in Parks was involved because it was in Verdugo Park. It was a great event, and it was really packed, but outside, so it was safe. So, and then I had one other thing to mention, which is a request actually to staff that I might need a second on, and that is that I know that staff is working on bringing an ordinance to ban single-use plastics. I think that's coming at the end of the year or the beginning of next year. What I wanted to ask is if we could add to that a look at reusables and especially for encouraging or requiring reusable items for dine-in service at restaurants. One of my pet peeves is when I go to a restaurant and I'm sitting down and they hand me plastic forks and spoons and plastic plates and plastic cups, and I'm sitting in a restaurant, a full-service restaurant, and there's really no good reason why they can't be using reusable items. Now, some very small restaurants, yes, maybe they don't have room for a dishwasher, although there are services now, I think, evolving that are kind of dealing with that issue by collecting materials and everything. But I still think that's something that I would like to consider, and you might want to look at Culver City, which either has just passed an ordinance or is working on an ordinance that would require reusables for, at least for full-service dine-in and maybe for coffee shops. Would any of my colleagues second that?
I need to think about it a little bit. I'm not opposed, but before we send staff on that route, I need to think...
Really? Okay.
Anything else for no lack of a second? Okay, anyone else?
I'll bring it up next week.
Mr. Tuktali, I have a question for you. Do we have any plans for a study on or an ordinance amendment to our ADU ordinances to require that any new ADUs built in the future should be electric? Is that in our ordinance or not?
Mayor Devine, members of council, as of right now, this is the first time that particular item has come up, so the answer in short is no.
I would like to see if I can get a second to have that, to have staff look into that. I know that several cities have ordinances with, included in the ADU builds, development, that require them from now on to be electric. Anyone like to second that?
Well, I would be happy to second that, but staff might want to mention the Reach Code project that they're working on because that would... Code project that they're working on, because that would cover, I believe, any new construction and would impose some new requirements to either go all-electric or mostly-electric, and anyway, it's complicated. But I know David Jones is working on this.
That's, Councilmember Brotman, yes, that's correct. He is working on that. That is an item that would likely end up going to the State Mobility Commission before it comes back to City Council.
Right, but that would include new construction ADUs, I believe.
That would include a component of this, but in terms of specifically requiring that absent that process, that is something that's not currently in our code.
Okay. So I'll second Council, Mayor Devine's request, but just suggest that we kind of line these two up if possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And that concludes my comments. Staff, any comments?
Mayor Devine, if I may, I just wanted to make one notation. We indicated during the preview that the Volta Moratorium conversation or discussion will be next week in the evening. In fact, that item is going to happen at a special meeting at 2:00 PM in the afternoon.
Okay. Point taken. And that'll be changed on the, or on the web, on the website?
Correct, if it hasn't already been done.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you. Community events, do we have any calls?
Madam Mayor, we do have a caller.
Okay, let's hear from them.
Tony Passarella, you're live. Tony, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and viewing public. I want to introduce you to a doctor. His name is Peter McCullough, M-C-C-U-L-L-O-U-G-H. His website is heartplace.com, heartplace.com. He's a world-renowned doctor on early treatment protocol for COVID. And Mayor Devine, you've consistently, over the last several months, projected your fear upon the general public, and I'm going to ask you once again to cease and desist any further promotion of a vaccine. Aram, could you roll that video?
Vaccines are directly killing babies in the first trimester, and it is absolutely atrocious. No woman should ever take the risk with a COVID-19 vaccine during pregnancy, period. The FDA, Pfizer, Moderna, didn't allow it in their clinical trials. It should not be allowed in practice today. In pregnancy, above all conditions, it's primum no nusri. We would never do harm to a pregnant woman. We would, you know, we have drugs, we have, our pregnancy classes, A, B, and C. We would never, ever give a drug that we even thought had a chance of causing harm to a pregnant woman, let alone just jack them up with a genetic juice, which we now know is absolutely positively dangerous. It is atrocious what's going on right now. So these are gene transfer platforms, wildly experimental, that produce in an uncontrolled manner a dangerous protein from the human body that damages blood vessels, causes blood cuts. I think these obstetricians are going to wake up in a cold sweat, and they're going to be horrified with what they recommended.
Okay, if anybody questions this man, he's got 35 peer-reviewed publications on COVID-19. He's got over 30 clinics in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. He's recognized as an expert, here's his credential, board certified in internal medicine in cardiovascular disease, professor of medicine at Texas A&amp;M College of Medicine, 1,000 publications, 600 citations in National Library of Medicine. Dr. McCullough has made presentations on the advancement of medicine to the NIH, FDA, Assistant Professor of Medicine, Henry Ford, Assistant Professor of Medicine, Missouri School of Medicine, Division Chief Nutrition and Prevention Medicine, Oakland University, Chief Academic Dean, St. John's Providence, Internist Cardiologist, Baylor University. This man is world-renowned. He's treating patients unlike Napoleon Fauci, whom you're getting your information from, who has not treated any COVID patient. So please, if you don't want to listen to me, maybe you'll listen to Dr. Peter McCullough, heartplace.com.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Passarella. Thank you for the info.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I can't let that go. I need to, I need to remind.
Of course you can.
I need to remind the public that Tony Passarella is peddling lies. This website that he relies on, if you noticed, it says Brighteon. Brighteon is run by a guy named Mike Adams, who has been banned on almost every other social media platform. The reason he's been banned is that he is purposely lying about vaccines so he can sell supplements and other alternative treatments. He runs a big business, and a lot of people, maybe Mr. Passarella, have gotten sucked into this orbit and are believing what he says. It's all a bunch of lies. I want to encourage the public to look to the CDC, look to the Departments of Public Health, get your information from reliable sources, not from people who are looking to sell snake oil. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brotman. What's next, please?
Madam Mayor, next item is eight action items. Item A would be City Treasurer regarding City Treasurer's annual review of the city portfolio. One motion accepting report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Tactalian.
We are going to go directly over to our City Treasurer.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Menuchyan.
Sure, I'll be reading item A to B to the record, too. City Treasurer regarding city of Glendale investment policy. One resolution adopting the city investment policy for fiscal year 2021 and 2022.
Thank you, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Menuchyan.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we are presenting the annual investment portfolio. Report to the council and the community today, including changes to the investment policy. We're going to start with our investment philosophy and objectives, which will be guided by the prudent investor rule. Our objectives are preservation of principal, ensuring liquidity, and then securing yield. The rate, and as our objective, the rate or return should meet at least the annual total return of three-month treasury bill. The total portfolio holdings at this point, the city funds, successor agency funds, and redevelopment agency bonds are at 808 million. And our total city investment in cash, investments at 775, and cash on hand, 178 for 2021, for a total of investment in cash of 953 million. As a comparison from last year to this year, June 2020 and June 2021, it is, the asset allocation is relatively the same. The only difference is the federal agency collables, which have increased from 2%, 2.5% to 12%. We have started, that's because we have started purchasing the federal agency collables at this time. Our credit ratings, the yellow bars are the current year, 2021. The quality of our holdings are very good, triple A or better, which are high-grade investment, high-grade investments at this time. Investment maturities, as you can see, there's a little dip, which is the COVID year dip. As in four years, we stopped purchasing securities for a while, and now we have started again. The yield to maturity, we meet and exceed our annual return on the three-month treasury bills, which is our objective. And end-of-year key statistics, starting with the year that I started with the Office of the City Treasurer in June 2013, portfolio was 373 million. In June 2021, at 775, the yield was at 0.7%. It's at 146 now. In 2018, it was 2.6, 19, 2.36, and June 2020, 1.92%. This year, we've earned, this year, June, as of June 2021, the earnings were approximately 12, 13 million dollars. In our yield comparison to the surrounding cities and the cities we were able to get information from, we're doing fairly well as compared to the other cities. We are recommending changes to the investment policy, and the changes relate solely to the environmental, social governance policy, as included on page three of the city's investment policy under section five, investment objectives, item D. Recommended changes mainly deal with ESG responsibilities, which will be in addition to and subordinate to the safety, liquidity, and yield investment objectives. And investments, ESG objectives will be investments in entities that support the objectives or ESG objectives through practices that emphasize the following: environmental considerations such as climate change, carbon emissions, air and water pollution, energy efficiency, social considerations such as community relations, diversity, labor standards, and specifically human rights, governance considerations such as board composition, corruption, and lobbying that does not align with the city's ESG policy. There's no one specific and exhaustive list of ESG issues that should be considered or can be considered. The specifics above are a baseline, and additional issues should be considered from a moral and ethical perspective. Specific issues that will be considered include refraining from investments in entities that engage in direct production and/or drilling of fossil fuels, entities that lobby and deny the Holocaust and genocide, and entities that discriminate based on race, color, religion, sex, national origin, age, or disability. That is my report. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Colleagues have any comments or questions?
Mayor, I do have one caller.
Okay, let's hear from the caller, please.
Bert Culver, you have three minutes. Bert, go ahead.
Yeah, hi there. Thanks for taking my call. I just want to say how proud I am that Glendale is divesting from fossil fuel and human rights violations. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. I agree with Mr. Culver. I think it's a really great list of changes in our investment policy. So I thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we need a motion for?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have a comment and a point to clarify. So we spoke about, Rafi and I spoke about this earlier, so I know the answer, but just to clarify for others, we are, we are not turning around and selling all our fossil fuel or other problematic assets. We are just going to no longer purchase them and let what we have mature. And so I wanted you to clarify that, and also, the three holdings that I mentioned to you, which are ExxonMobil, Chevron, and Berkshire Hathaway, which a lot of people don't know, owns probably the largest set of coal assets in the United States. So I would hope that those three are on the list of assets that we would no longer consider.
Right. Mayor Devine and Councilmember Brotman, councilmembers, that is correct. We are not selling any bonds that we are currently holding, because that could, as I made a presentation last time, that could affect a considerable amount of revenues to the city. We are, the policy that I am recommending currently will be effective as of October 1st, 2020, and we will not be purchasing any securities or bonds that fall in those categories. I must also say that I have been very diligent in terms, over the past year, actually, since the suggestion was made by councilmembers, not to approach or to purchase anything that could be classified as such as either fossil fuels or any of the other categories that I, that I mentioned. And we have been, that's why we have been solely purchasing federal agencies, basically. So that is, that is correct, Mr. Brotman.
Thank you. I have a question.
The Councilmember Agajian.
Can you go to exhibit D?
The credit ratings?
How come I have different than what you have?
No, that's what we have.
Is there a question?
They say this, what I have, of course, is this. And I was wondering, the correct one, in my package, that was what I had. It should be this. This is the difference. So that's why.
Yes.
I was wondering how you would explain this.
But the left phone looks very creative.
That's why I was wondering what it shows. I was, I really put some time to see what it shows, because I couldn't follow. Anyway, thank you.
Okay. All right, then, do we have a motion to accept this report?
I will move to accept the report.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Agajian. Do we have a second?
And I will second that. Do we have a second motion?
So, Mr. Jimmy read in both 8A1 and 8B1, so they can both be moved and seconded at the same time.
Oh, okay.
All right, I will move this 8B off.
Second, 8A.
Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Second, 8A and 8B.
Thank you. We'll call, please.
Councilmember Agajian.
Yeah.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kusakian.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Menuchyan. Next item, please.
Next would be nine hearings. Nine, A, City Attorney regarding ordinance approving a statutory development agreement between the city of Glendale and Vista Investments LLC for the construction and operation of a six-story, 130-guest-room hotel to be located at 120 West Colorado Street using the downtown specific plan, Chapter 7 Hotel Incentive. One ordinance for introduction.
Thank you. And I will open the hearing. And can we have a report, Mr. Tactalian?
Seems I have the easy job of transferring all these presentations over to other people tonight. I'm going to go ahead and transfer this over to Jillian Van Widen, our Chief Assistant City Attorney.
It's good to be in charge.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. On May 21, 2021, the council adopted an urgency ordinance approving a statutory development agreement with Vista Investments LLC, which agreement Vista had requested in order to, among other things, preserve the hotel entitlements to accommodate development delays stemming from COVID-19's heavy impacts on the hospitality industry. A new ordinance is before you tonight for introduction. It is proposed to be adopted on a non-urgency basis. It will supersede and replace the urgency ordinance and will operate retroactively to May 22, 2021, which is the date that the project entitlements would have otherwise expired. The city council had granted the entitlement approvals back in 2018, May 22, 2018. Those entitlements were extended in 2019 until their, until May 22 of 2021. In the interim period, the developer had requested a, the city approved a development agreement to preserve those entitlements, to provide them with that additional time. On April 7, as required by the Development Agreement statutes, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the development agreement application and found that the proposed agreement was consistent with the general plan, with the downtown specific plan, and made certain recommendations concerning the term of the agreement and the locking in of development impact fees. The findings of the, and comments by the Planning Commission were transmitted to the City Council as required by the government code. That initially came before the City Council in April of 2021 for introduction. However, the council wanted to find out more information about this development, concern for housing vouchers being provided at the existing vagabond inn which the proposed AC Hotel would replace, and to... AC Hotel would replace, and to limit the term of the development agreement from six years, which was what was requested, to three years. Ultimately, the developer team agreed to the City Council's requests, and on May 18, the city approved the development agreement on an urgency basis. In the period following that, there was a challenge that was filed, and in an abundance of caution, and that challenge, part of the basis of that challenge was pertaining to the urgency nature of the ordinance, of the development agreement ordinance. So, in an abundance of caution and to cure any possible conflict that there might be with applicable law, and for the avoidance of any doubt or ambiguity, the proposed ordinance is brought before you for introduction on a non-urgency basis, and expressly states that it would apply retroactively to May 22, 2021, and that it will expressly supersede the urgency ordinance number 5967 that the Council originally approved on May 18, 2021. So, that's a seventh, sum and substance of what's before you tonight, and I'm available for any questions. And if there are any questions for the developer applicant, they are, I believe, on the line, have called in, and they're available for questions as well. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do have two callers on the line for this item.
Okay, shall we, let's hear the callers, please.
Kristin Miller, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Kristin.
Thank you. So, hi, my name is Kristin Miller. I'm a researcher with Unite Your Local 11, and I'm calling to oppose this item. Chapter 30.41 of the Code is clear that even with time extensions, the project approvals automatically terminated if not used within three years. If the city wanted to extend those approvals via a development agreement, it had to do so following the proper procedures and before those approvals expired, just like the local government did in the recent case entitled North Murrieta Community LLC versus City of Murrieta. That did not happen here, and tonight's action is completely contrary to the Code and common sense. First, the urgency development agreement did not qualify for urgency legislation and thus was not properly approved. Second, tonight's development agreement is being approved after the permits have already expired. Third, nowhere in state or local law explicitly allows a development agreement to apply retroactively to revive dead approvals that have expired, which renders parts of chapter 30.41 absolutely meaningless. Fourth, allowing retroactive development agreements to resurrect dead approvals would lead to absurd results and also defy common sense. What is to stop the city from reviving approvals that expired months, years, or even decades prior? Fifth, it is contradictory for the city to say the expiration of the project approvals justified the urgency development agreements in May, then flip-flop its position four months later by adopting tonight's retroactive development agreement after the approvals expired. The city already violated its charter in state law by adopting this development agreement by urgency ordinance. But that was not the only issue with this development agreement. The Glendale municipal code states clearly that variances last for two years and can be extended for only one year. This development agreement grants the developer a longer variance than is permitted under Glendale law. In effect, the city is seeking to grant the developer an ad hoc exception to its zoning ordinance. This is not what development agreements are for. They are intended to exempt developers from future changes in the law, not to exempt developers from the law as it currently exists. To reiterate, this issue is compounded by the fact that the developer's variances expired nearly four months ago. For the reasons explained in our writ petition, the city could not approve a development agreement through urgency ordinance. So, the variance expired in May of this year. By passing this new ordinance, the city is actually reviving the developer's expired entitlements. Glendale zoning code says nothing about this process. The developer should reapply and follow the standards required of every other hotel in Glendale being proposed.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ben Miden, would you like to respond to any of that?
The matter is currently set for active litigation. The development agreement that was approved in May has not been overturned, and so the presumption that Ms. Miller has stated is that it is not active, and therefore it can't be superseded and replaced. Also, the presumption that a legislative act cannot be adopted and applied retroactively is incorrect. So, that is far, that's as far as I'll take my comments in response to Ms. Kristy Miller.
Thank you very much. Our second caller, please.
Danielle Wilson, you have three minutes. Danielle, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Danielle Wilson with Unite Your Local 11. I'm mostly going to pick up where my colleague Kristine Miller left off. So, the developer should reapply and follow the standards required of every other hotel in Glendale being proposed today. The development agreement for the AC Hotel should include strong community benefits, such as conversion of the existing 52 rooms at the Vagabond Hotel into emergency housing for the homeless, and requiring 50% of the rooms in the AC Hotel to also be reserved for emergency homeless housing upon completion of the project. Vagabond Hotel has already been participating in Project Room Key, which has been successful in the city. The current community benefits provided by the development agreement are simply insufficient to justify the benefits conferred onto the developer. Currently, the developer has committed only to provide, quote, "up to five vouchers based on room availability," unquote, providing, quote, "housing opportunities for persons transitioning into permanent housing," unquote. But even that commitment ends upon the demolition of the building and the development of the AC Hotel. At the very least, the development agreement should require an ongoing commitment to provide emergency homeless housing. Local 11 continues to urge you to reject the proposed development agreement. Why should Glendale be providing concessions to hotel developers at a time when the travel market, particularly the future of business travel, is uncertain while Glendale and our region's needs for housing is pressing and obvious? How will granting this special privilege aid Glendale in fulfilling its goals under the housing element, like making Glendale, quote, "a city with a range of housing types to meet the needs of current and future residents," unquote, and, quote, "a city with increased opportunities for affordable housing," unquote? Or aid in meeting its very aggressive state target for building housing, including affordable housing, in the next eight years? Thank you.
Is Project Room Key still in existence? I thought that was over.
That's my understanding, and Mr. Lanzaphane is coming to the podium to provide additional information on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, as I understand it, the Project Room Key program that was referenced and was really implemented during COVID has ended. It has shifted now to be more acquisition of hotels and then creating affordable housing through the continuum of care, emergency housing, through the conversion of hotel rooms, which is something that you've directed staff to look into as well.
Thank you. Are there any comments from my colleagues?
Yes. Ms. Devine?
Oh, Mr. Councilmember Aga Janian?
I'm still wondering since 2017 that how many hotels we need in Glendale. But however, I was told by this, Mr. Lanzaphane, that we are short on hotels. I don't know. They are the expert, and they're saying we are short on hotels, and he gave me numbers that we still, we can have more hotels in Glendale. We need more hotels. However, I don't know that, but I trust that they are, their information is correct. But however, one issue that I want to see, a new hotel in this place, because this is, this hotel has been used for other matters. So, I would rather see a new hotel in place of this one, and that's why I would like to move this item if I can.
Well, I have to close. Are there any other comments from my colleagues? Okay, then I will close the hearing, and then you can move the item.
It's an introduction of ordinance.
It's just an ordinance, introduction of an ordinance. So, that's, will you do that, Mr. Councilmember Aga Janian?
Yes, I will introduce the ordinance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Based on Ms. Land Miden's information.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And what's next, please?
Next to the oral communications, discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Madam Mayor, I do have two callers on the line for this.
Okay, let's go ahead and hear them.
Liz Amston, you have five minutes. Liz, go ahead. Ms. Amston? Ms. Amston?
I'll turn off her TV.
Ms. Amston, can you turn off your TV? Madam Mayor, I'm going to go to the next caller. I'm going to put her on hold.
Okay, and we'll come back.
Herbert Milano, you have five minutes. Go ahead, Herbert.
Thank you very much. Mayor Devine, members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Milano. I wanted to take a few minutes to explain to the current council members my interest in city finances and how it is that I became interested, deeply interested, in how the city's finances work. I had begun my involvement with city government starting in 2001 as a result of the controversy regarding high rent increases that occurred when apartments buildings were sold. So, as a result, I started watching council meetings to understand how council members understood multifamily housing issues and how council members made decisions. I was eventually involved in a committee that dealt with multifamily housing issues, and we met once or twice a week. I helped form the Glendale Apartment Association, and I was the president then, and served in many, many meetings to try to figure out a way to resolve it, and had great cooperation from the city staff. By the year 2004, I had many conversations with each of the council members, and I was able to determine the level of knowledge of each council member with regard to housing issues, but I was able to meet and speak casually about other city issues that had come to my attention. One of those conversations was with ex-council member Rafi Manukian, who was before you today. And I told him about my experience as a coach for AYSO, Region 88. My contention at the time is that nearly all the practices and games were held north of the 134 freeway. So, when I asked Mr. Manukian, and I recall this conversation very vividly, why the city was so deficient in Parkland and South Glendale, he responded with a question. The question was something like, "Where would we get the money?" Or, "How would we pay for it?" So, as a systems analyst, I've been studying financial systems for companies for many years, and decided, well, maybe I can take a look at the city's financial statements and see if I can find an answer. And fairly quickly, I began to determine that the pension system was overburdening the city's finances even back then. I think we have had a loss of maybe $150 million in less than two years on the pension system. And I began to understand what the unfunded obligation was and tried to have a conversation with the council members to say, "Have you seen this? Do you really understand what this means?" And to my surprise, I wasn't getting very good answers coming back to me with regard to how confident or knowledgeable they were with regard to the city finances. So, then I became interested in the budget sessions to see if this issue still would come up. All in all, I think I've attended well over 1,500 city council sessions and hundreds of other meetings that I've attended, including the Audit Committee and many sessions on, that regard the budget study sessions. And I've been concerned for a very long time why these issues are not presented candidly to the city council year in, year out, as this amazing debt continues to grow. So, the turnaround between the year, let's say, 2003 or so, which we had a surplus maybe of $150 million to a debt of close to $600 million today, or as of last year, gives me a great deal of concern with regard to how is it that you know what you know? So, whenever someone comes to the city council to speak during oral communications with a firm belief in something, right, whether it is anti-vaccine issues or Wi-Fi dangers and so forth, these people are generally pretty honest and true to their feelings of that they have this knowledge that they feel is secure. But I wonder how much of what you know is just simply something that has been repeated to you continually or that have been withheld from your knowledge for a long time, and just giving verbal assurances that everything is fine? In other words, it's an epistemological issue. How do you know what you know as you go about figuring out how to decide? So, I decided to look at other cities where government works much better, where there is strategic planning, where they have targeted goals, where the budget is set to clear measurable objectives, and started presenting that to the city council with very little traction. And so, I'm continuing to wonder how it is that we can create programs without establishing clear goals, why it is that we don't review them, say, a year later to figure out, oh, we passed this ordinance last year, let's see how we're doing, where objectives met, how did management do with regard to this? So, I became very much interested in how government works and where it doesn't work well. And I think it's an epistemological issue. It's about how you know what you know. And oftentimes, I find that it's simply a narrative that you got, maybe from the Democratic Party, or a narrative that you got from the Republican Party.
Mr. Milano, your five minutes is up.
And very plenty of information. So, I suggest to the city council, to maybe in this future where we are facing significant financial difficulties...
Mr. Milano, your five minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in. Next caller is Monica Campagnan. Monica, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
You have five minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Devine. Good evening, city council members and city staff. My name is Monica Campagna, and I am a Glendale resident. I'm calling tonight to introduce a series of what I hope are inspirations for how our city and our utility can take new steps to build and manage our local energy resources to avoid new investments in gas in our city. Some of these are legislative strategies, such as changes to our building codes, and others are distributed energy, energy efficiency, and load shifting programs that our utility could pursue. I offer these ideas with the backdrop of knowing that the utility of yesteryear is ending. We have entered a time when the climate crisis demands utilities to manage power in new ways. There is perhaps an uncomfortable reality that to fully unhitch ourselves from fossil fuel use, utilities will have to move away from looking at load as a given, but rather embrace it as something that can be managed. Our new utility model needs to partially rely on load shifting programs and participation by the public to reduce our peak needs. It's understandably a challenging thing for a utility to operate with these new parameters with more moving parts, partially relying on behavioral approaches. But this is the world that we are in now. Colorado Utility Manager Brian Hannigan described how his utility switched to renewable resources, paired with storage, and many behavior-related programs, was actually saving customers' money, providing better service, and allowing the utility to allow the savings to buffer cybersecurity expenses and grid infrastructure expenses for them. But it was a big change, and I want to quote what he said in a recent podcast. "It takes a lot of innovation. It takes a deep rethink of who you are and what you do. You're moving from a utility that's focused on taking commodity kilowatt-hours generated by a fuel with a cost, moving it one way over a relatively rigid distribution system to a passive customer that just pays the bill and thanks you for the lights being on." It's much more of a contact sport now in the sense that our consumers are now asking more of us. We are delivering new and innovative services to them. We're having to be much more active in balancing our system and coordinating our resources, operating a little bit like a distribution grid operator would, where we're trying to be the orchestra conductor for all these different drums and cymbals and whatnot, some of which are owned by the consumer and some not by us, or owned by and operated by someone we have on contract, and it's not a utility-owned resource. So, it's a much more complex landscape that we operate in. And everything from here out, how we train our workforce to how we operate our system to what we prioritize for our investments, has been radically revitalized in the last few years, and I'm proud that we've been able to do it while still remaining one of the lowest cost... And I'm proud that we've been able to do it while still remaining one of the lowest-cost power providers in the state. End quote. Thankfully, there are a lot of technological innovations that make managing load possible as long as there's a culture at the utility that's wired for innovation, and as long as our community feels incentivized, including with financial rewards, to participate. GWP recently launched the Franklin Demand Response and Lime Energy Efficiency Program. Those are a good start. If you're a fellow resident listening out there right now, I really encourage you to visit their new website for the program and sign up if you can, gwppeeksavings.com. I'm not a salesperson for GWP. I'm just another resident, and I believe we all need to be doing our part to pick in to reduce load, which saves us money on our bills, so we can keep our utility from investing more, more money in fossil fuels. But that said, this Peak Savings Program incentivizes us to participate by providing an annual cash reward in exchange for a very painless contribution of allowing the utility to shift down our smart thermostats by three degrees at the most, which you probably won't even notice when they're having a peak energy event. This allows us to not have to build out capacity, fossil fuel or otherwise, to serve that load, which translates to less financial burden shouldered by residents for energy infrastructure. And that is a value asset. So looking at the demand side piece of the puzzle, what else can we do? This is where I will start my ideal list next week, beginning with EV charge load shifting programs, now that I've provided some context. I have about six or seven meetings, I figure, before council takes up the Grayson Repowering Project, and I hope to bring forward some ideas that will shift your mind to thinking of other ways we can strategize our energy needs reliably here in the city. Thank you for your kind attention. Good night.
Liz Amstyn, you're, Liz Amstyn, you have five minutes. Go ahead, Liz.
Great, thank you. Hold on, because they're still talking. I've been impressed with how much environmentally positive issues have been addressed during this meeting, but I'm calling to strongly oppose the biogas regeneration plan that Glendale will be addressing early next month. I've lived in Highland Park for the past 32 years, and as was mentioned earlier, biogas is not an environmentally friendly energy source. Furthermore, the Shell Canyon dump has negatively impacted the health of surrounding communities for decades, including the contributions of the constant stream of trucks up and across Figueroa, adding to the pollution, tearing up our streets, and putting other drivers at risk. Furthermore, building an enterprise like this on a known fault and in a known wildfire area is critically dangerous. And finally, if the leakage from the dump into the water table is not stopped, the dump must move towards closing and remediating the land, air, and water if Glendale is to be considered a responsible neighbor. And I have a brief comment on, basically, the vaccine issue that was raised in Item 6, that I am one of about 20,000 people out of 200 million vaccinated who has a long-term reaction, primarily severe vertigo. But I'd also like to point out, I am alive and working, whereas almost 700,000 unvaccinated Americans are dead. And the gentleman who spoke should do the math based on that. Thank you very much. Bye.
Joanna Springle, you got five minutes. Joanna, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Devine, council members. This is Joanna Springle. I live in Verdugo Woodlands, and I've lived in Glendale for 35 years. I'm concerned about the Grayson Repower proposal now out for public comment. It does not include enough clean energy. It seems we're rushing this because we're up against a deadline. Why, when we have known about this deadline for two years, do we not have any more clean energy in this proposal? I was at the city council meeting in July two years ago, when, as leaders, you directed GWP to come back with more clean energy projects. You did not ask GWP to come up with a plan to refurbish gas burn engines and call that a better investment. Glendale should be prioritizing the maximum possible clean energy generation over building new fossil fuel generations. The urgent overriding priority for this project should be to replace our aging fossil fuel equipment with as much locally-generated renewable energy as possible. Please ask for a new proposal that acknowledges the climate emergency. I deeply appreciate your diligent leadership. Thank you for it, and thank you for your attention tonight.
Leah Camprera, you have five minutes. Leah, go ahead. Leah, can you hear me? Leah, can you lower the volume on your TV? Leah? Deborah Kellaway? Deborah?
Yes.
Can you hear me? You have five minutes. Go ahead.
My name is Deborah Kellaway, and I live in the Pelican area. I'm also calling about the Grayson Repower Project proposed in the new draft EIR. Californians are currently enduring fires, drought, and heat waves, and scientists tell us that these are all made worse by the climate crisis. The climate crisis emerges matters that we need to address at every level. We need to move away from fossil fuels and go towards clean energy. Glendale has got now to focus 100% on clean energy. Please insist that GWP go back and draft a new proposal, one that provides us with the best possibilities, including an extensive solar and battery source program, and other new clean energy programs. I thank you very much for your, to address the climate crisis and to improve our community. And thank you for your time tonight.
Bert Culver, you have five minutes. Bert, go ahead.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, the other day I saw the flyer for the offer from GWP to give homeowners $50 a year to get a smart meter, a smart thermostat to turn off their air conditioning during peak loads. And then I also, I saw that the new Grayson Fossil Fuel Plant is going to cost more than $500 million. So if instead of giving people 50 bucks a year, you just gave them $10,000 a year to turn their power off completely, what you could do with your smart meters, I bet you would get enough people to totally take the peak off. So instead of building a new plant for 500 million, you pay the citizens to not use power during peak load. You have accomplished the same thing. You do a lot less building, and you don't, you don't create a stranded asset for Glendale to deal with in a decade. I really have been enjoying watching the council meetings on YouTube and calling in. I'm a parent, so it's hard for me to make it in. And it's one great thing that's come out of this whole COVID thing. But what I miss is seeing my other citizens there at the, at the, at the meeting, at the council meeting, and talking to them. And on YouTube, there's ability to chat, where you can talk to other people who are currently watching the council, and you can make comments to each other. But you have it turned off for some reason. I was wondering if it's possible to turn it on so that the community who's watching the video can chat with each other while the video is going on, or while the council meetings happen? Well, anyway, I just want to reemphasize that Glendale really needs to think outside the box and come up with a more creative solution that doesn't involve fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you, Bert. Stephanie Shosh? Stephanie?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have five minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilman. I'm Stephanie, and a 20-year resident of Glendale. And I'm calling because, once again, we're looking at proposed plans for the Grayson Power Plant. It's been two years since GWP revised its original plan requiring 262 megawatts of natural gas down to 93 megawatts, something many of us have pressed for. And we applauded this change, not only because of the decrease in the use of natural gas, an emitter of polluting carbon dioxide when burned, but also because it showed that GWP was able to find better ways to provide electricity to the city, greener, cleaner ways. Another good development is the pursuit of solar virtual power plants, or VPAP, as it's called, to our energy mix by working with Sunrun. Negotiations still in progress. This will be a network of single-family homes and multifamily buildings linked to be able to contribute solar power and stored energy via batteries to the grid when most needed. It will also provide backup power to participating customers in the event of a grid outage. What's more, the projected contribution of the proposed Glendale VPAP has essentially doubled from the original estimate of 13 megawatts to 25 megawatts. But two years have passed, and yet the proposal coming to council still includes the same amount of polluting natural gas as proposed two years ago, when council very specifically requested GWP to come back to it with new options to reduce the gas. So my feeling is that GWP needs to do better, especially given the many innovations in the past two years, for storage, among other things, and the increase in transmission now available to Glendale. GWP needs to be more proactive to eliminate those 92 megawatts of natural gas. And here are a few things they might consider. To look at something similar with VPAPs with commercial customers. Why limit this only to residents' homes? Manage demand better, as a few speakers have indicated. Why focus only on the supply side? By looking at demand, new perspectives and opportunities can appear. Understand that it makes little economic sense to invest millions in new gas equipment that will be obsolete when the state goes to 100% clean energy by 2045, or sooner, as many predict. LA is committed to 90% clean energy by 2030. Certainly, Glendale can match that, or at least come closer than the current proposal would bring us. And take a closer look at some of the assumptions on which the current proposal is based. Are all the solar projections incorporated? What about the additional transmission coming online? And why are we using a higher reserve requirement than the 15% standard used by Burbank and Pasadena and almost every utility in the state? If the base numbers are too high, then the level of additional natural gas GWP claims it needs is likely to also be high, too high, and maybe not needed at all. Natural gas has been considered a bridge energy resource on the way to renewable energy. To quote the environmental activist Bill McKinnon, "It's time to stop searching for a bridge and simply take the leap." I hope Glendale will choose to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Leah Camprera, you have five minutes. Leah, go ahead. Leah? Leah Camprera? Leah Camprera, you have five minutes. Go ahead. Mike Mohill, you have five minutes. Mike, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. Are bicycle riders a special class of citizens in the city of Glendale? How come bicycle riders don't have a license to ride the streets of Glendale? We have people who ride cars, taxi drivers, Uber drivers, Lyft drivers, motorcycle drivers. They all have to pay a fee, license, to ride the city's surfaces. How come people who ride a bicycle don't? Yet we go ahead and spend thousands of dollars every year on bike lanes, signs, et cetera, at the city level, county, state, federal, and yet we have no accountability? If you live in the brush areas of the city, you pay a fee. So again, why don't we have a fee for the people who, who, who ride their bikes? We need the money. We need the money, and this is a source of revenue. You know, you make the landlords have an accountability. You have businesses have an accountability, and they're all paying fees. How come we don't have a fee for people who ride the bicycles? Are they a special class of people? If we're going to spend, put out, the taxpayer putting up millions of dollars throughout, actually throughout the country for bike lanes, I'd like to know where all these bicycle riders are. I rarely see them. And yet they're all over the, you know, we're spending money, and you don't see them. We need some accountability. I suggest the city agenda an item, and find out how we can have people who ride bikes in the city of Glendale and register them with the city clerk's office. We can actually get an accounting, and we can start raising money. I suggest we have a fee of $100, which is a good start, maybe even higher, and then we can see who actually wants to ride the bike. It's a lot of, you know, it's easy to go ahead and special interest. The special interests want bicycle lanes, and bicycle limits, all that good stuff. And how many people are there that the politicians cave in to these people? And, and go ahead and spend our tax dollars for bike lanes? And yet I don't see the, you know, there are far and few between. This isn't fair to like groupy people who are not riding the bicycles and being inconvenienced. You go, wherever you go, you see, this is a bike lane, and you can't, you can't park your car in the bike lane. But where are the bike riders? They're far and few between. Let's get an accounting. Let's have a license fee. We used to have a fee for bicycles, I think, years ago in the city of Glendale, but we don't have it anymore. Why not? If this is such a, if this is such an important item, have agendas and spend millions of dollars every year throughout the country for bike lanes, let's have the bicycle riders pay their fair fee. You make people who ride cars pay a fee, motorcycle people drive, pay a fee, bus drivers, bus users, everybody pays a fee, but a person who rides a bicycle. I think it's about time these people also pay their fair share. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill?
Gloria Smilovich? Gloria, go ahead. You have five minutes.
Hi, thank you, guys. You know, I'm actually calling on behalf of my daughter. She lives in Glendale with her husband at 717 North Howard Street, Glendale, California, 91206. My daughter suffers from lupus and lung disease, and she lives in a non-smoking building, guys, but the tenants right below her chain smoke on their balconies. And because my daughter's sick, she's often stuck in one area in her apartment. The smoke, even with the windows closed, goes right into her place, and it causes her to become even more ill. Apparently, the landlord and/or the manager is lying and saying that it is a, it's not a non-smoking building. Her husband has gone and spoke to those tenants. They don't care. They won't stop. So do we, is there anything, you know, they can do?
We'll, we'll address staff after you hang up.
Okay, please do. And you do have the address, eh?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, guys. It's very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Thank you. So my question to staff is, are smoking ordinance, does it allow smoking on balconies in apartment buildings?
Mayor Devine, if you give us a moment, Phil is coming up to try to answer that question off the top of our heads.
Mayor Devine, we have the address and the phone number. We'll ask code enforcement and our fresh air ambassador to look into the issue and provide educational materials and any other to enforce that. I'm not, I'm not particularly sure, so I don't want to answer and maybe give the wrong information. But we'll have them look into it tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. Thanks very much. Do we have another caller?
Leah Camprera, can you hear me? Leah? Yes, you have five minutes, Leah. Go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Devine, and the members of the city council and city staff. I am calling about the Grayson Repower Project proposed in the new draft EIR. And I'm very, I'm very concerned that after two years, GWP is still is proposing a major investment in fossil fuels and gas burning generation. We need more clean distributed energy, and all potential options have not been explored. Local clean energy is a crucial asset to make sure that Glendale's grid is resilient and can withstand impacts of the climate crisis. Local clean and distributed energy will help us manage peak demand and decrease the load on the distribution system. Also, it will reduce the likelihood of equipment failures. More clean energy is the smart choice for Glendale residents now, and investment in our future. It is doing our, our part. It is doing our part to address climate change and build a sustainable future. We need to stop relying on gas generation. Commercial solar installations and additional distributed battery storage have not been fully explored. I urge you to oppose the Grayson Repower Project as it's presented and direct the GWP to investigate all alternatives. Yeah, as a former biologist and an pollution specialist, I really think that solar is the best option for us to investigate, solar and batteries. And I've lived for almost 11 years in Chappie Chase Canyon. And thank you for your service to our community and your commitment to your constituents. I know you share our hope for a clean and sustainable energy future. And good evening to everybody.
Thank you, Leah.
Madam Mayor, that was the last caller.
Okay, very good. Some very insightful comments tonight. Thank you all. What's next, please?
Any new business? Adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Ready. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
We had a motion by Councilmember Najarian and seconded by Councilmember Agajanian.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 7:52 PM. Thank you all. Good night.